Would you all rise and please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, forever. I wanted to see if anybody was talking. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Just a couple of things. We will take public comment prior to the budget vote. And we'll take public comment at the end, right before adjournment. The only other thing I wanted to say is, school committee people, if you have questions, just raise your hand. I should be able to see it. And then I'll try to call on you, see if we can do that. And then the other thing I wanted to announce is that the MSMA is holding a meeting for school board chairs and vice chairs Monday at 6 o'clock. Are there any particular questions you would like me to take with me? Oh, my dogs are howling outside. With me to that meeting? That, that, yeah. Any questions you can come up with?
When is it taking place?
Monday, 6 o'clock at night.
So we can email you before if we do?
Yep, for sure. Yep. Okay. Joe is missing, and I don't know why. Because he was all set to go. And he hasn't called me, so I don't know what's going on. Let's move on, then. Adjustments to the agenda. Madam Superintendent?
The only adjustment to the agenda is a memo I sent to the school committee this afternoon. And following the budget discussion and vote, I'd like to speak to it with your permission.
Absolutely. I already put it on my, my agenda. Jennifer, thanks so much for joining us today. And we are looking forward to our audit report. You're on.
Thank you. I will tell you that this is not my first Zoom meeting, but I have had some issues with Zoom freezing on me. So please bear with me if I freeze at any point in time. It usually only happens for a few seconds. Do you all have copies of the graphs that I sent out earlier?
We have copies of the report.
Jennifer, I don't think they do have copies of the graphs.
No.
Okay, I think I can share my screen. Let me see. Oh, my, I don't know how to do this.
So Jennifer, if you share your screen, there's a bottom, at the bottom of the window, there should be like a green arrow that says Share Screen. And then you pick the screen that you want from there.
Yeah, I, I'm, I did that. Let me see if I put it on here. Can you see that?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Hold on. Let me try. Sorry, please bear with me.
Okay.
This is a learning experience for me, too. Are you?
You're about to, there you go.
Yeah.
You're all set. Nice job.
There you go.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good, perfect. Okay. Well, thanks for having me. I am going to go over the results of the fiscal year 2019 audit. Your, I'm not sure what slide it's showing up on, but there's a set of graphs that we put together that's kind of a brief overview with the financial statements. So I'm going to go through those. And then if any, if you have any questions, feel free to jump in if you have any comments. And then after that, we'll go over some of the comments that we had. So I'm just gonna scroll through here. You can still see that, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't see what you're seeing, so I'm not sure.
It says summary of audit results.
Okay, great, perfect. So the first graph we have here is an overview of the audit itself. For starters, we were at the town for June 19th through the 21st to do some pre-audit work. At that time, we gather information for the audit. We do some internal control testing and some compliance testing. We then came back for the weeks of October 7th and October 28th to perform the audit itself. As you're aware, the, the audit is still ongoing. We're, we're getting to the very end of it, but as of yet, the, the final reports have not been issued. As far as the financial statements go, for the school department financial statements, they did receive an unmodified opinion. So what that means is the school department financial statements are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's a good thing. Besides the financial statement audit, we are also required to do an audit under government auditing standards. And that is basically a compliance audit. So we have to test the school department's compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. And under that testing, there were no material weaknesses, but we did have a couple of significant deficiencies. And I will go over those a little bit later. Can you still hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, some of the video feed is, is blinking. I'm not sure why. And then finally, we have some testing that we're required to do under uniform guidance. Because the town spends and receives over $750,000 in federal grants, it's required to undergo what's called a single audit. So we are required to test compliance and internal controls over some of your federal grants. And under that testing, we did not have any findings as far as internal controls go, but we did have one finding for the total local entitlement program, which is a special education program. And I'll get into that in a little bit as well. So this first graph here, you're gonna see my notes on here. This is a graph of the school department's general fund, fund deficit over the last three fiscal years. So you can see that the deficit has decreased, which is a good thing. In 2018, or the beginning balance for 2019 was actually restated. When we started performing the audit, we realized that in 2018, the accrued amounts for the teachers for the summer salaries did not include benefits, and they should have been included. So the beginning deficit was actually increased by approximately $225,000. But the end result for 2019 was it was, the deficit was just over 1.1, so about 1.2 million. You can see the general fund deficit has decreased by approximately $497,000 over the last three fiscal years. And in the current year, it decreased by approximately $389,000. Questions on that? I'll move on. The next couple of graphs focus on basically why your deficit decreased. So the next graph we have here are the general fund revenues budget to actual. So this is looking at some of the larger budget to actual variances. And you can see that local assessments were over budget. And that had to do with the fact that the school department's general fund retained some of the amounts that were raised for adult education. The state education subsidy was also higher than budgeted, and that had to do with changes at the state level. Medicare reimbursements were higher than anticipated due to an increase in eligible students. Charges for services were under budget, and that was because special education reimbursements were lower than anticipated. And other revenues were higher than budgeted due to various miscellaneous amounts that were received by the school department, but they weren't actually budgeted. And overall, you can see that school department revenues were approximately, approximately $145,000 higher than budgeted, which is about 1% of the budget. This, the next graph we have, again, is general fund expenditures, looking at the budget to actual variances. So you can see that regular instruction is actually over budget, and that had to do with some health insurance costs that were higher than anticipated. Special education expenditures were under budget as costs related to tuition, some health insurance costs, and contracted services were all lower than anticipated. Other instruction expenditures were under budget as costs related to transportation and supplies were lower than budgeted. And system administration expenditures were under budget as costs related to legal services, health insurance, and equipment maintenance were all lower than anticipated. So overall, you can see that total expenditures were approximately $245,000 under budget. So total expenditures were approximately 2% less than budgeted. Any questions so far?
No.
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 Okay. Yeah. No, that's a, that's a positive result.
Yep.
The next graph we have, actually, the next two graphs we have here. We have the 2018 expenditure distribution and the 2019 expenditure distribution. And what this is, these are your general fund expenditures expressed as a percentage of total expenditures. Most of these categories stayed relatively the same. Some of the biggest pieces are what you would expect, regular instruction followed by special education, facilities maintenance. And I've made some notes on here as far as which ones increased or decreased. So you do get a little bit of a fluctuation from year to year. The big difference being the transfers out increased by 1% because of transfers to school lunch, the school lunch fund.
Could I just make an observation?
Sure.
You can see that regular instruction, special ed are the balance of our budget. But that the next larger is facilities maintenance, which is at 10%, which is an increase. And it's our suspicion with our older buildings that that will continue to increase. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Sure. That was it for the graphs. I was going to then go over the reports. And I assume you have these. So what I have here. This report is the compliance report. First of all, before I continue, did you have any questions about any of the numbers or anything in the financial statements at all?
Anybody? Nope.
No, I didn't.
And if you do think of something after the fact, by means, you can always pass your questions along to me. Sometimes you think of something afterward.
Right, thank you.
So this next report we have is, the title is Reports Required by Government Auditing Standards and Uniform Guidance. So that is the report on the compliance for government auditing standards, as well as the single audit that I mentioned earlier. If we go down to, I'm just gonna scroll here to page nine.
Can I stop you for a minute, Jen?
Sure.
Matt, is there any way we can help Jana hear better?
I am trying, but I think it is her connection. Because I am hearing everything perfectly and right on time.
Right.
So I just sent Jenna a message about that one. I'm not sure what else to do other than that.
Okay.
Because it, it looks fine on my end.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I can hear Matt probably better than I've heard anyone. I'm hearing very little, like every three or four words or whatever.
Oh, really?
Well, I appreciate the slides. It's helping me follow along, but
Okay.
The audio is just not coming through well.
Um, I don't know, maybe if I move it closer to me?
That
No, I think it's for the connection, probably.
No.
One thing
That was going to happen.
If the school committee members could mute themselves at this point, and if they want to speak, just unmute yourself if you know how to do that. I don't want to do it for you. That may help slightly. But Jennifer, you're coming through loud and clear on my end. So since it is being recorded, Janet, that may help a little bit. But the, the recording sounds fine from here.
Okay, if you, if you do need me to repeat something, just let me know. Okay. Um, so as I mentioned, on page nine of the compliance report, we have the first of the significant deficiencies that we had. This one has to do with segregation of duties. And for those of you who are not familiar with the concept of segregation of duties, what that is, is in an ideal situation, you typically have more than one employee who is performing different parts of a process. The example that I always use would, would be cash. So if you have an employee who is taking in cash and preparing the deposits, you usually don't want that same employee also preparing the journal entries for cash and doing the, the bank reconciliation. Now, we realize that there is a cost benefit analysis with this. So, I mean, the town is probably never going to be able to go out and hire enough employees to get ideal segregation of duties. So we put a comment in here so that you're aware that, that it is a risk, that you do have certain areas where ideally you would have more than one employee performing those functions. Any questions on that? No, okay. The next one we had had to do with material audit adjustments. We, as auditors, rely on the information that management gives us when performing the audit, which includes the reports. When we come in to do the audit, we get copies of the trial balances and the revenue and expenditure reports. But if we find that there are discrepancies between the reports and the underlying detail, and they require material audit adjustments, then, then it's a foregone conclusion that the, the school department and town would have a significant deficiency. We did have to propose a lot of adjusting journal entries that were material to the audit. Any questions on that? No, okay. And again, I, I assume that a comment like that will get better going forward. I understand that this was a difficult year. It was an unusual year. The next comment that we had was the finding for local entitlement. The, the finding was for the federal procurement standards. So the uniform guidance has basically three thresholds under the procurement standards. It has the micro purchase threshold where anything under $3,500, the school department is just required to follow its own procurement policy. So if you usually require a purchase order with an invoice, then you would just be required to have a purchase order. The next level up would be between $3,500 and $150,000, and that's called the small purchase threshold. Anything that falls into that range, the school department is required to get a reasonable number of quotes from reliable sources. And then the next threshold would be the simplified acquisition threshold, which would be anything over 150,000. And in that case, it would be something that would require a bid. The local entitlement program bought a van in 2019 for about $27,000. And it did fall into that range for the small purchase requirements. But the local entitlement director did not get quotes for the van. And so for that reason, the grant did receive a finding for that. Any questions on that? Nope, okay. Um, yes.
I missed the whole last part of that after the, that they didn't get the bids. So the van was what?
The van fell into the small purchase threshold because it was approximately $27,000. And the school department was required to get a reasonable number of quotes. But they did not get quotes for the van, and so it was a finding for procurement standards.
And what does that mean when you say?
I got about half of that.
I'm sorry?
I said, I got about half of that.
What does it mean to have a finding, Jen?
Well, what that means is going forward, the grant will be considered higher risk. And so it will have to be tested again. But other than that, it just, we made a recommendation that the local entitlement director review all of the disbursements that go through the local entitlement grant to make sure they are meeting the procurement standards. I mean, that, that's all that really happens.
So Jen, are you up to speed with that yet? Okay, your mic is still off.
I get about half of it.
So I'm gonna try to re, repeat it. Tell me when you can't hear me. Can you hear me okay?
I, no.
You're, you're sort of going in and out, too. Well, if you can't hear me either, there's no reason for me to try to repeat it. But we had a finding against us because we did not get estimates on the van that was purchased for special ed. How's that?
I got that much.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's all there is to that.
Okay.
Okay, Jen.
The Sorry, I seem to have lost it. Here we go. One of the other reports that we issue is what's called a management letter. And it is more of an informal report. It's really a letter to the town council and the school committee. And in that letter, we include some of our observations and recommendations. They're not considered significant matters. So I'll go through those as well if, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'm gonna, can you see that okay again?
Yep.
Maybe if I make it a little smaller, you can, can you still read that okay?
Yep, that's great.
Okay. So going through some of our comments that we had, the first one had to do with local entitlement dispersments. We selected 22 dispersments that were made out of the local entitlement grant. And of those 22 dispersments, two were missing both an approved purchase order and an approved invoice. Now, normally, we would look for one or the other. We either look for a purchase order that has been signed for approval, or if there's, if there is no purchase order, then we would look for an invoice that was signed. And those two dispersments had neither one of those. There was also one dispersment that was missing an invoice. The school department was not able to locate it. And so our recommendation was just that the school department ensure that all dispersments have the appropriate documentation and authorization before checks are issued. The next comment we had had to do with the school department budget. One of the procedures that we do is we review the budget as it is entered in the accounting software and make sure that it matches the budget that was approved at referendum. And we did notice that were some, there were some budget adjustments that actually increased the budget in total by $21,000. Now, the increase did not cause any of the individual categories to be overspent, nor did it make the, or did it create the, a total overage in the budget. So your total budget was not overspent, and your individual categories were not overspent because of the increase. However, the state, state law does prohibit any budget amendments that increase the total budget. And you do run the risk of there possibly being an overspending. So what should have happened is when those particular budget lines were increased, there should have been decreases in other budget lines.
Yep.
I'm gonna skip over the town comments. Let's see. The next comment we had had to do with activity funds. Those are the bank accounts that are held at the individual schools. So we did test for the student groups. We did test all three of the schools, and we had some comments for each of them. So for the grade school cash receipts, we tested five transactions. And of those, three of the amounts were deposited more than 10 days after when they were originally received. The middle school cash receipts, we noticed that the school is not using a two-part daily cash log, which the school department actually has a policy for its activity funds that requires the use of those cash logs.
Right.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I know, I was just agreeing. Yep.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
The school has actually been using a deposit summary sheet when the deposit is made up of multiple activity accounts. And when the deposit is only one activity account, then it just writes the name of the activity account on the bank deposit slip. However, deposit sheets appear to be made out the same day as the deposit because they're usually the same date as the deposit. So there's no actual record of the receipts when they're actually received before they're deposited. And since there was no record of when they were originally received, we were unable to verify that they were deposited in a timely manner. Our high school cash receipts, again, we noticed the high school's also not using the two-part daily cash log. Instead, instead of using the cash log, they're just signing the deposit slips. However, we selected 40 receipts to test, and of those 40 receipts, 18 were missing the signed deposit slips. We also identified six deposits that were made eight or more days after the amounts were received. For the middle school cash dispersments, we selected 40 dispersments to test. And then we noticed that none of the dispersments had approved vouchers. The school department does have a policy that states that the school should be using approved vouchers for their dispersments. We also noted three instances in which the principal was reimbursed and two instances in which office supplies and postage were purchased through the activity funds. And then finally, for the high school cash dispersments, we, of the 40 dispersments that we selected to test, 15 were missing approved vouchers, and two of the dispersments were missing either vendor invoice or vendor receipt. We also noticed 13 of the 40 dispersments were actually for reimbursements. The school department policy strongly discourages reimbursements. So that seemed to be a high number of reimbursements for such, for such a small sample of dispersment. So related to those issues, we did have a few recommendations. All schools should be using the two-part daily cash logs that are required. And receipts should be documented when they are received, not just when they are deposited. All schools should deposit the receipts no more than one week after the amounts are received, as required by the school department's policy. The policy does actually state that the school should not hold on to deposits longer than one week, and they should not be held over the weekend. The schools should ensure that all invoices, receipts, and signed vouchers are received for dispersments before checks are actually written for those dispersments. The middle school should discontinue paying for general office supplies and post regular the number of reimbursements made and only allow reimbursements when they are unavoidable. In addition, the middle school principals should probably avoid making purchases that require reimbursement as they are discouraged. In addition, the middle school principals should probably avoid making purchases that require reimbursement as they are discouraged. Any questions on that? That was pretty comprehensive. Nope, okay. And the last one we have here had to do with the school fund deficits. And we were reviewing the school department's year-end balances. And we noticed there were several schools' special revenue funds that had deficits. Most of the deficits were in the smaller grants. But we did notice that the adult education program has a deficit, which as of June 30, 2019 exceeds $226,000. So our recommendation is that the school department should review these funds to make sure that all revenues that were supposed to be included in those funds were actually recorded there. And if those deficits are not going to be offset by future revenues, then they should come up with a plan to eliminate those deficits. Because eventually, if they're not going to be covered by future revenues, then the general fund will, will need to take care of those deficits. But you're still muted.
Did it get unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, that deficit has been there, oh, this is my ninth year, that deficit has been there for probably 15 years.
Oh, wow.
Just accumulating. And I think that we're all in the black, black right now, but with what the budget is for that program, there's certainly not any money going back in to pay against that deficit. So we had a similar deficit like that with food service, but that one has been paid off, so. I believe, unless you tell me otherwise.
No, actually, the, the school lunch fund had a positive ending fund balance.
Right, which is just outstanding, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, a lot of hard work went into that. And I think that we were in the black for adult ed for this past year. So we're pretty pleased that's a major turnaround for that program.
Well, that's good.
Thank you.
Sure. That's it for what I have, unless you have any questions or anything else you'd like to discuss?
Folks?
Could I ask a question?
Is that Joe?
Joe, yes.
Oh, there you are.
Joe has been found. Yes, he has been. Sorry about that.
Joe, go ahead.
My question was on reimbursements. And the, the question is, is that instead of trying to get it through the school department later on, should we be using some kind of a cash box or something? I'm not sure what those reimbursements were for. But previously, we'd have problems with referees or something like that that would want to be paid after the game and, you know, something could come up. Did you, you didn't see a large amount of money in this reimbursement though, did you?
No, they were typically smaller amounts, you know, one to $200 maybe. I'm not sure what you consider to be large amounts. They varied quite a bit, but they're, they're typically a teacher or a student group advisor who goes out and will buy supplies for the group and then get, will get reimbursed by the activity fund after the fact.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I had known in the past that we had some situations with referees. They get paid very good money for refereeing those games now, so we could get up to $100 for the group or something like that very quickly.
Yeah, we, I mean, we do understand that you are going to have to occasionally do that. You're going to have to have reimbursements. But the, the school department policy does specifically say that reimbursements are discouraged. And so that's, that's why we put that comment in there.
I, I agree with, we should discourage them, okay? I just know that we're running a school. That's the big problem.
Right, no, understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Okay. So is that the whole report, Jennifer?
That's it. Unless there's something else you'd like me to add.
No, thank you. Not unless you found a pot of gold somewhere.
No, unfortunately, I did not.
Thank you so much for spending some time with us tonight.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Really appreciate it. Okay. So Matt, are you gonna take that off of the screen and?
It will when she stops sharing her screen, which is right there. Jennifer, if you could stop sharing that.
Uh, if I can figure out how, let me see.
Yep, again, I think if you just click that share screen button at the bottom, it should stop sharing.
It's not showing it. Hmm.
There should be a button somewhere where, also.
A symbol?
Hmm. Well, that's interesting. I suppose I could just stop it altogether.
I think that would be good also. If, if you just left the meeting, it would probably do that also. Assuming you don't want to stick around for the rest of the fun.
No, I'm fine.
You want to stay for the rest of the meeting, Jennifer?
Stop here. Nope.
There we go.
Thank you.
Got it. All set. Thank you, Jennifer.
Did it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
I'd like to move into our new business right now and I'll entertain public comment for anyone that would like to make a comment on the budget. So we're about ready to go with the budget. Public comment on the budget, please. Matt, do I see anybody?
There's nothing in the chat at this point. If somebody wants to ask a question or anything, please put it in the chat.
Please type it into the chat.
Yes, and if it is something there, I will let you know. I see nothing at this point.
Okay, Susan, you're on.
Okay. I move that the 2020, 2021 school operating budget, including nutrition and adult education allocations for the town of Winthrop be approved in the total amount and that the superintendent be authorized to present that budget to the council.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? And by voice, please. Susan, are you in favor?
Yes, in favor.
Kristen?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
And I'm for it as well. So the budget, that first motion passes five to zero. Susan, you're on.
Okay, I move that the 2020, 2021 adult education budget for the town of Winthrop be approved in the amount of $94,090.46, including the sum of $55,000 to be raised in support of that budget and that the superintendent be authorized to prepare and deliver that budget to the council for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And we'll do it by voice again too, because I think that's stipulation. Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer, yes. Motion passes five, zero. How do you like my hammer?
Okay. I move that the 2020, 2021 school food service and nutrition budget for the town of Winthrop be approved in the amount of including the sum of $200,000 to be raised in support of that budget and that the superintendent be authorized to prepare and deliver that budget to the council for approval.
Second.
The move in the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer, yes. Motion passes five, zero. We have a motion to approve a continuity of learning plan. Is there any public comment for the school committee before we vote on this motion? May I, may I have the motion, please? Anybody?
I move approve a continuity of learning plan.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Brown, would you care to tell us more about the learning plan, please?
I would like to speak to the memo that went to you this afternoon and starting with a summary of where we were to where we are right now, if that will meet with the school committee's approval.
Yes, please.
Okay, so time has gone quickly, although it perhaps doesn't seem like that. So back March 12th, we started to worry that the school department and the town might be facing an epidemic. And so what we did was, at that time, we still did not have any tests, any tests, any cases in Maine. But we started anticipating that there would be cases, although we didn't know they were going to be announced the next day. So the first thing we did was we prepared to remotely pay our staff. Ida Simmons, who is the HR person in my office, started making preparations so that we could do time cards and electronic deposits for everybody so that when the time came, which is actually this Friday, we will do our first remote payroll. So on the 14th, the superintendents in Kennebec County had an emergency meeting with the commissioner of education. And there was mixed guidance regarding whether schools should close. If you recall, Dr. Mills saying back two weeks ago that you could spread kids out in a classroom satisfactorily and not spread COVID-19. Well, that guidance evolved and that weekend, we decided that we would have an emergency meeting and that we would close for 10 days, which at the time was the advice from the CDC. And that we would have a full closure, that nobody would be in the buildings. And our hope was that the schools would be open, that the guidance given was keep the buildings closed, keep people out, and try to do as much cleaning as you can. So we did that. We also inventoried our pantries in our school kitchens, our perishables. And we started to figure out how we would, first of all, deal with the items that we had in stock. We contacted Representative Hickman, who agreed to store leftover food in his wok and cooler. And everything else went to the food pantry. Things that we could cancel, we did. Those were deliveries for the 16. And those would have included fresh food, fresh produce, bread, milk. And families were notified then on the 15th that we were going to be closed for 10 days. I did ask families to let me know if they did not have access to internet. And two families have contacted me. One, we found a source of Free Spectrum. Spectrum is giving free internet to families who don't have it right now. And the second one, we talked about trying to find ways to make them copies of materials. The learning plan has evolved. So the next thing that we needed to do was to get in touch with the main department of education to ask them to authorize a summer feeding site at the grade school. And as I put in my note, it's not easily done. The form is unfriendly and the application, as Erin put it, is just painfully detailed. School nutrition programs are among the most highly regulated, as you can anticipate, with the stringent, most stringent guidelines about food preparation, including summer programs, how you can keep it, how you have to move it, and you have to make sure that temperatures are checked and maintained. And the main DOE was pretty clear that you had to follow these guidelines. We are a district with 30% of our students who receive free and reduced lunch, unlike other districts who can put out meals for every, for anyone ages zero to 18, who are hoping for that. We felt as though we needed to use as much reimbursement as possible. We're very conscious of the taxpayers in Winthrop and we don't want to go willy-nilly into something and just say, we'll just, we'll just figure it out later. That was not acceptable to us. The child nutrition state director told Chef Weeks that this program was specifically not an adult feeding program. So going forward to the 22nd, we had a team of volunteers that included administrators, the presidents of the Winthrop Education Association. And we made 300 breakfasts and 300 lunches. And the reason that we selected the options for those meals is because, one, that's what kids like. When we serve students in our schools, they prefer sun butter and jelly. And two, deli meats are highly perishable for us. And we did not know how long we would be able to maintain and transport them. So that's why we selected the menu that we did. On Wednesday, I'm sorry, on Monday, we gave out 80 breakfasts and 85 lunches at the grade school. It seemed to line up with parents picking up their laptops. And today, which was Wednesday, the second day, we passed out 21 breakfasts and 22 lunches. Beginning tomorrow, assuming this all is, meets with your approval, we're going to, I will send a letter to families letting them know where we are in terms of the school nutrition program. And it will have a hot link in there for them to order food for next Monday and Wednesday. We've had some challenges getting staff to come in and work. As you can imagine, there have been concerns that some of the folks that would come in have, are either in a high-risk category themselves, or they have high-risk people at home. So we have run primarily with volunteers at this point. We need to get a much more accurate sense of how many people actually need the lunches. We were talking today with Metrowana, and Metrowana is also running a program quite similar to ours. The menu is the same. Erin's talked with them. We've donated some of our things such as yogurts that will not last until Monday to that program as well. And we've emptied all of our school food pantries and given them to the Winthrop Food Pantry. So those things have gone there. We gave out the laptops and I gave you the numbers that are here. Let's see. The Department of Education met with superintendents electronically and recommended that we extend school closure through the 27th of April. And if you, if you saw Commissioner Makin's MDOE publication today, there's a very good chance that school closure will be recommended through the end of the year. That decision hasn't been made yet, but please know that it's being very seriously considered. So I immediately engaged our principals to engage their faculties. We believe that teachers need to be given as much flexibility as possible and that we need to decentralize this. Teachers know their kids best. They don't need Connie Brown telling them how to teach or what to teach their students. And so they contacted them electronically. As I said here, we have amazing people in our district who know what our students need. They have been connecting with them either through Google Classrooms or Zoom, which is comparable to the meeting that we are having now. We talked about having packets. And the educators that spoke with me said that it was tantamount to busy work. And they felt strongly that they would get, their students would get more out of with them electronically than preparing packets that they thought would be busy work. Teachers will provide feedback on their work and any grade will be pass fail. Teachers will provide feedback on their work, and any grade will be pass fail. So let's see, I told you about the laptop distribution. We are having our special educators connect with students, and we're starting teletherapy. I believe that started today. For those therapists that provide that particular service through a, through a student's IP. We have buildings doing professional learning communities with their teachers to help support them through this time. I don't know if you've noticed, but it seems like there are a million different online services coming at teachers right now, and trying to select which one will actually work for you is, is overwhelming. And so we have professional learning groups meeting together either by grade level or by building to help support teachers with that. Teachers are connecting again with their students. We talked about that, Google Classroom or Google Hangout. And in closing, for our plan, it doesn't seem to be a standard procedure for how districts are managing this. It seems a little bit like everybody is trying to figure it out on their own. We're in a crisis. I think superintendents are making good decisions based on their individual districts, and you have to base that decision on the resources that you have or the resources that you don't have. In some of the more remote places, they're having a very hard time with internet and connectivity, and you're going to see more packets being given out. That doesn't appear to be the case here. As I mentioned earlier, we were able to find connections for families, so that need here, anyway, seems to be quite small. So that is what our plan is at this moment. I'd be happy to entertain any questions from the school committee.
I'd like to, if I may, just add a little bit to that, Dr. Brown, and say that you, as a superintendent, were very clear, right as the crisis was evolving, beginning to evolve, that all of our employees were going to receive a check. You said to me, quote, "Our people need and expect and rely on their checks biweekly, and they're going to get them," and that happened way before the governor made it so. And then the other thing is that we have had difficulty having folks volunteer for the food service. Really don't expect them to at all. So the folks that have stepped in have been our administrators and the MEA leadership. I just want to acknowledge that. Tremendous amounts of work, work has gone into organizing the computers to be handed out. That was work that was done over the weekend. Hours went into that. Make sure that they had their cords and their computers, handing them all out to folks. And I know that Sunday, some of our leadership was in one of our buildings, making the lunches and the breakfasts. They're there again to actually hand out the computers, make other things available to our students, and to also hand out the meals. So I know that I've missed probably hours and hours of work that our leadership has gone through, but I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged the, those things, and a giant note of appreciation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A lot of good people are trying to do their level best to make the most of an evolving crisis situation.
I know that several times you've really expressed to me how fortunate you feel to have the folks, the administrators that you have to work with and the MEA leadership to work with.
I do. They're awesome people.
So thank you very much. Any other comments or thoughts from other board members, please? Ms. Shumway?
Dr. Brown, as you said that this is an ever-changing situation, and so I greatly appreciate what you and the administrative team and the teachers and staff have all done to this point and continue to work on as new information comes in and we're in, and the situation changes yet again. In order to support the efforts, as it seems like we are going towards a more remote, perhaps, platform for educating our students, are there any policies that the school committee needs to make adjustments to, needs to suspend, needs to create in order to allow for our teachers to have access to our students through a social media type platform, or have the individual principals, building administrators, have they educated their staff and created a set of parameters for what should be happening in those Google Classrooms, Google Meet, or even a Zoom platform like this with their students?
That's a great question. And later in the agenda, and I was probably remiss not to point this out, the school committee does have a policy E D C A dash D, which is a permission form, to allow video conferencing, and I'm recommending that you suspend the use of that form until 2020. Logistically, trying to collect that back from people right now will slow down teachers trying to reach students, and at this point, I just don't see the utility in trying to collect that permission.
So we have that coming up, Ms. Shumway, as C, under new material, under new business.
Yes, I saw that. My concern is more how to protect our teachers from unknown things happening in the Google Chat. Some concerns that I've heard have been, should there be a requirement that all of the student-teacher Zoom meetings, for instance, can be recorded? So should that be a requirement? Other things like, should the teacher be the first one on, the last one off, that sort of thing, that I had never thought about, that could create a potential situation for a teacher in this new platform, where everyone is somewhat isolated, and you don't have the immediate administrator support down the hall, you know, if something happens. So it's, it's those sorts of questions that I'm just wondering, do we need to think about those before, or have they already been thought about and shared with teachers that are going to start using some of these, these new platforms for, for conducting classes with their students?
So I am going to call on Matt, because Matt, if you can unmute your
Yep.
screen.
I'm here.
You probably have the most experience with this of all of us. Did you have a chance to hear Kristen's questions?
I did.
What is your thought?
I think that the teachers who are using some of the video conferencing things, it's not brand spanking new to them. I think they've used a portion of this in a different setting within their classrooms that they've been doing right now. So I don't believe that it is, it is like a new thing that teachers are trying to figure out. I think they've used it a little bit and explained to their kids about the rules of, of video conferencing and that what's appropriate and what's not. I think those discussions have already been had, if teachers are using this type of platform already. I, I understand your concerns fully. In my last district, we also used a little bit of, of video conferencing at times, and when I was teaching way back then, we actually Skyped some people in that were sick at that point, and they understood the rules. I think it's a, it's a very good question, I would say, but I, at this point, I think the kids all realize that schooling is for schooling, and they're not going to be inappropriate. I understand the question, but I'm, I'm unconcerned that that's something untoward is going to happen. I would like to read a couple of the, the comments so far. Mrs. Chris has said that she would like to recommend that all of the school committees look at the individual teachers' pages on each school's webpage, on how they are engaging their students at this point. I think they're all doing a fabulous job at this point, but you do have to go to the individual school page and then to the teacher pages, and you can see how they are engaging their students at this time.
Yeah.
Ms. Shumway, a little bit, trying to figure out what, what teachers are actually doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say that I'm quite excited that we're moving in this direction. I'm also excited to know now that teachers have already been doing this. But perhaps at the next school committee meeting, we could have an update on things that may have happened that we should become familiar with, if there are such problems that we haven't talked about tonight.
Thank you.
Mrs. Guyer, is, is this an appropriate time to list a couple of comments from?
Oh, yeah, I thought you were going to.
From the chat. Yep, oh, here I am. So good. One of the first ones says that there are potentially volunteers that can be recruited by the town as well as the school system. Let us know how we can help you. That is from Barbara Alexander. And another question that has come, talks about, is there any, going to be any attendance function while we are doing any remote learning? So I don't know if you, Dr. Brown, if you want to mediate to that or yourself?
I can start, Matt, and then you can end. From what I've seen out of the department, they have waived all attendance requirements for the, at least so far, 2019, 2020 school year. Have you seen this thing?
Yeah, so just before this meeting started around 4:30 or so today, the, the department let people know that their waiver requests from the feds have been agreed upon, so there is no school day requirement for this year, nor is there any testing requirement for this year. So we've been waived of all the MEAs, the SATs, on anything that was required in the past for ESSA. That is now waived for this particular year, along with any of like the, the dashboard items that were on the website. There was the, like, chronic attendance. Everything like that has been waived for this year. Anything you see on there will be strictly from the 18, 19 school year, and then it will jump to the 2021 school year. So basically, this year, for all requirement purposes, has been waived due to this situation.
What kind of, what kind of impact does that have on diplomas and our graduating seniors?
So Mark, are you able to get yourself unmuted and offer your opinion about that? Hang on, I know he's here.
Yep, Mark, you should be good to go at this point.
Okay, so Dr. Brown asked me to do a little research, and I went through every senior's transcript this morning, and most of our seniors are in really great shape to receive their diploma, hopefully in June. Some of them still need to complete their senior English. Others need to complete a FINAT and a Phys Ed requirement, but it's minimal as to what they need in order to meet the local and state requirements.
So it's, it's easily accomplished, in your opinion?
So they still have work to do, but I do believe if they keep doing what they have been doing or had been doing up until March 13, then we should not have any students slip through the cracks.
I probably phrased that incorrectly, not that it's easily done. It's just, the opportunity is, is there for, for them to complete the requirements.
Correct. And, and I sent an email out to the teachers today, and not just seniors, but for all students, if they have a student that does not seem to be responding to their email requests or Google Classroom requests, to contact either Lisa Johnson, right, and we will call Holmes personally.
Anybody else? We good to vote?
If I could read a couple more comments, Ms. Guyer?
Oh, sorry.
Nope, that's, that's totally fine. That's totally fine. One of the next comments that came up during that last discussion was that I'm somewhat concerned about kids who never show up. I think Ms. Campell just addressed that, that teachers are making, teachers and administrators are making every effort to contact the people who are harder to get to. So it is, obviously, we're in day eight at this point, and we are very, very early in the situation, but we are making every effort to find these kids and get them connected with us at, at some point. Mrs. Chris would also like to mention or kind of clarify that we are not going to punish kids who can't or won't do work with grades. Again, we're, we're in day eight, and this is a very fluid situation, and as Dr. Brown mentioned earlier, this may continue to the end of the year. We're going to do everything to help kids along with their learning, but we're not going to punish them because of something that is completely out of their control. So again, we're going to make every effort to connect with these kids and get them to do some things, but we're not also going to punish them at the same time because of, of the situation.
Any more comments?
That is, that is all I see at this point. The, the last mention that I just saw was, thank you, I definitely recognize how difficult this is, which it is.
Okay, thank you. Is everybody ready to vote on the motion to approve a continuity of learning plan? All in favor? Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer, yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Very much. I'll entertain the motion to suspend, let me see. Motion to suspend policy E D C A dash D, permission form video conferencing until June 30th, 2020.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded discussion. Superintendent Brown, do you have any comments?
I do not.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, Ms. Bells?
Yeah.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer, yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, just before our adjournment, public comment. We're waiting and watching, watching and waiting. Anything yet, Matt?
Nothing else has come through the chat at this point. One comment right now says, I'd show you my smiling. I think we're in a good place. Thank you very much.
Ms. Guyer, I would like to say something, if I might.
Please.
We moved seamlessly from the audit presentation into the discussion of the budget, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank my office staff who put in a tremendous amount of time. You may recall that at the beginning of 2018, we had a pretty significant transition in the superintendent's office. We lost everybody except Colleen. You had new superintendent, you had new HR person, and those folks really buckled down and got it together to produce what I think is, I'm, I'm pretty proud of the audit that was just shared with you. I mean, you don't have a business manager, you don't have some of the depth and other that I've been in, but I thought she presented a very accomplished audit for you folks, and I'm, I'm very pleased. And the people who deserve the credit for that are the people in my office, like Ida and Amanda, because they're the ones that were doing all the work. So if you have a minute, just drop them a note and thank them, because they, they've really put in a lot of the time to give, I think, is a pretty good score for 2018, 2019.
Absolutely, that's a great idea. And you did have a lot of turmoil and transition, that is for sure. Outstanding job. And I have to say, the audit is very specific. Outstanding job. And I have to say that the audit is very specific and will be very helpful, I assume, as we move forward.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, folks? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Sue.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Geyer, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, Matt, and Joel, and everybody else that helped make this happen. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
And good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.